Hey. Live from Bellingham, it's Thursday night. I'll stop talking now.
Just started?
Go for it.
Welcome to the Bellingham zoning board of appeals meeting for Thursday, September fourth, twenty twenty five. Motion open hearing.
So.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Wait, can I make a motion that we waive the reading? Okay, no.
Will you second?
Yeah, second.
Second?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, just one item on the agenda, continuation for a public hearing for eighty six Pine Grove Avenue.
It's actually a new public.
Yeah, why is it a continuation?
Oh, I was posted as that on the agenda.
It's not a continuation.
Yeah, it's just a new, it's a new public hearing, and a typo, but new public hearing for eighty six Pine Grove Avenue. So applicants here, John. Yes, just a quick little overview of what you're seeing tonight. I think everyone except James. Yeah, twenty twenty three.
Did you abstain, though? Are you in a turn?
No, no, that was Brian.
Oh, okay.
He's the judge now, so.
Yeah, okay. He's, he's no longer on CBA, but all right, so I take it back. Everybody was on the board in twenty twenty three when this initially was submitted. So Atkins looking to basically is proposing an extension of the special permit. I'll let him go into the details of it and, uh, you know, we'll go from there.
Great, thanks, Rob. Uh, can just state your name and then if you want to just walk us through, uh, what you're looking forward to now?
Yeah, if you did address too, or just a?
Um.
The record you have.
Yeah, so John Genero, residential address is twenty Fisher Road, Renthal, Massachusetts. Business address is eighty six Pine Grove Avenue, Bellingham, Massachusetts. Um, so what I'm looking to do tonight is extend my special permit. So my special permit currently is for warehousing of vehicles and general non-hazardous warehousing. I'd like to extend that special permit to include car detailing, uh, which would be done in the building, uh, as well as modify the hours just a little bit to reflect what my customer needs are with regards to drop off and pick up those vehicles. I want to make sure I'm operating in my windows. There is, uh, there was a typo in the original, um, uh, ruling. Um, I think Amy fixed it, but, uh, I know in the copy I got, it was still wrong, but, um, so extend the hours a little bit. Uh, it's a very low use, um, situation. I mean, I, I'm there more than anybody else and I'm there a couple of times a week, uh, doing something. Um, so we've, uh, when I first approached the, the zoning board, I, I said I was gonna do a bunch of things to the building. I was gonna fix it up. I've actually done all of that ahead of schedule. So we've done a lot of improvements to the building to just make the whole environment better. So we repaved the parking lot. We've put a roof on the building. We've refaced the front of the building. Uh, we did a lot of work inside the building, so it's actually not the eyesore that it was before. Um, and so we're continuing that effort. So we're, uh, in the process of, uh, gonna start spray foaming the building. Uh, so the building's gonna be spray foam starting on Monday, uh, and then it's, um, gonna have heat pumps installed. So we're, we're just continually upgrading the building and just, you know, making it as nice as we can. Uh, but yeah, I'd like to, so the, the young man that I'm, um, that would be doing the detailing is actually a recent tri-county grad. He's a welder, uh, but he done detailing part-time. And he was gonna rent out somebody's garage in the backyard. And I said, you know, it's not really a, a place to do business. I said, why don't we see if it would work to have you work in my building? Um, one, you could help me out by giving a service to my customers, uh, help me out by detailing my vehicles. And give you a bit, a base of business at a, at a more reasonable cost. So I'm not charging him with this person was gonna charge him to rent out just a garage in their backyard. I'm giving him a good deal. Um, so it was kind of, I, I looked at it as a win-win for both of us, uh, if we could do that. And I'll be honest, I totally forgot about the special permit and Tim caught it when he went to, when the, the, the young man went to go get his, um, DBA. And Tim's like, hey, you need to go do this. And I'm like, oh, shoot, I forgot about that. Um, so here we are.
Okay, all right, well, uh, we definitely appreciate everything you've done to the property. Uh, fix it up and, do you know, I mean, this is, um, a little outside, uh, your scope, but what's the condition of the road? Cause I remember.
So the, the road's not bad, but it's not, it's not up to, and I'm not a code expert or a road expert, but it is not up to a road standard, right? So like, I know one of the sewer covers has sunk a couple inches. Uh, that's down toward my end of the road and then, um, it doesn't drain well.
I remember from the last, yeah, as I was saying, that there's so.
The problem is, it's not my road. So that there's nothing I can specifically do about it. Um, one of the things that I had on my, uh, list of agenda items to do at some point is to, uh, approach the public works department and basically say like, okay, you need to start taking care of this road. But there's, there's realistically only two houses on it and my business. So getting on their priority list, I'm thinking is probably pretty low. Um, because really, uh, I did talk to asphalt engineering, uh, when they did my parking lot. And they said, oh yeah, we quoted this road, you know, three years ago. Um, and I said, okay, uh, good to know. And they said, yeah, I did, whoever did it, just, they just laid tar down over what was there and made it better. But it's not, and this doesn't have really a crown to it. There's no drainage in it. So if the water just pools, uh, in one spot, I think in front of your house, right? No, no.
No.
Um, uh, but it does, it does pool, um, in, in front of one of the houses, so, um.
Yeah, okay, so Rob, I guess, um, how, does it affect anything as far as the zoning for him to be able to, uh, lease out a portion of the building?
Well, it's an existing non-conforming use currently, cause this is all in the.
In the resident.
Cause I, I recall from the last time that it was just for your.
Yes, correct. So I was curious, is there anything?
I'm more curious, to be honest with you, um, how detailing falls into repair, the statue of automotive repair.
What's the question?
You know, as we was looking for detailing, it is, how does that relate to, you know, the zoning for automotive repair? Do you know what I'm saying?
Uh, yeah, it's not the same category.
That's okay, that's okay.
I think originally, uh, when he originally came in, I thought you, I, I thought you did ask.
I did ask.
Till customers cars inside, then you store them.
Correct, yep.
But it was never really, uh, stated on, uh.
No, because it was part of that, the first time I came, I, I went all in, right? I asked for like a million things and everybody was like, no. Go try again, so we narrowed the scope a lot, right? Cause at that time, I wasn't gonna be doing detailing. I hadn't really thought much about it, so you know, I took it off the table. And then, um, this, this young man that's doing is my son's friend and, uh, I was talking to him about it and he said, it would be better if you were in a real commercial space doing this work, not in someone's backyard. You know, it, it's an image thing, it's a professional thing, um, and so I thought it'd be a better fit.
Yeah, I will say he has cleaned it up considerably. I'm sure some of the neighbors could probably talk to that, um, but, um, really looks pretty good. Somebody lives down there.
Yeah, I live around here, run. I mean, I haven't seen it, but I actually didn't even know you were operational.
Nobody does.
It was very quiet, so I mean, I don't see any cars going in and out of there and I drive by.
If anything, see me.
Well, not even, I mean, I do drive by, I didn't even know it was operational until Tim mentioned something.
Track the trailers going in and out and dropping out, restaurant is probably pretty busy, I'm sure. Everybody knows that, but there's that traffic isn't there anymore, so.
And Rob, what's the current hours of operation that were from the condition?
So according to the current decision, I think it is nine to one, seven days.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was the typo. So Amy was supposed to have, I got an email somewhere that she said she fixed it. Cause that actually wasn't the, cause we needed to have, um, more evening out. So it was, it was during the week, it was into the evenings so that people could come and drop off after work and pick up and things like that. Um, and then really what I wanted to extend it is just do that seven days a week. Because I don't wanna be operating outside. If someone comes and drops something off, I don't wanna be operating something I shouldn't be, right? I wanna be as compliant as possible, um, which is why I'm asking for the extended hours.
Yeah, so I'll have to check, check out with Amy, because I, this is just what I had on the server and what was with the.
I saw that when you handed it to me, I was like, oh, it was the wrong one.
Do you, what?
I see two different times.
Those are listed differently?
The, the, the meeting minutes, uh, discuss operation hours of nine to seven.
That's the right one.
But on the decision, it states nine to one.
Yeah. So there was probably a corrected approval at one point.
Yeah, I just said she filed it, but I actually couldn't, I went on to the, the registry and everything, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, that's.
But she said she did it, so I, I believe her.
Yeah, I, I do as well.
With the clerk.
That's would be where I would go next. Um, so your understanding is nine to seven?
Correct, so my extension is just a little bit and it's really just on weekends.
Were you looking for a permanent extension?
Um, I believe.
Eight to seven?
Eight to seven, but it's seven days a week instead of, instead of just during the weekdays, it includes Saturday, Sunday. That's all, cause I have, people are out on the weekends too.
Do you mind, Brian?
No, go ahead.
Um, in the original decision, we talked about absolutely no outside storage or outside work.
Um, so it was no, it had to be approved by the fire department.
Okay.
So I got that approved. The fire department came and did their inspection.
Yeah.
So Lieutenant, uh.
Altamonte?
Altamonte, yes. Um, so he was actually just over, cause, uh, there was a, it took some time for him to get, for us to align, to get the building fully signed off from a fire perspective. Both of us, our schedulers did it in the shop. Anyway, it's all done now and that was one of the questions I asked him when he was there. And he said, what he needs at a minimum is eight feet from the front of the building to like a clear swath, eight feet long, eight feet wide, basically the length.
I, I get that, but I think part of the board's concern was the actual storage of vehicles outside. I think that was in the decision, no storage of vehicles outside.
Oh, that's, you know, it, it was out in the fire department.
No one.
Well, there wasn't car hauler.
Not all the trailers.
Yeah.
And no automobiles.
Yeah, I don't have any automobiles outside.
That will stay the same if you take on this tenant?
Yeah, we're not storing, we're not, I don't store any, any cars outside.
And also no working outside moment?
Um, maybe a wash if anything. That would be it, you wouldn't work on inside.
Then on the interior would be the same, cause before it was forty, maximum of forty cars.
Correct, yeah, that stays the same, I can't get more than that.
Um, is there drainage inside?
Yep, by code, yep.
This before drain? Is there gonna be, um?
There's also a storm drain in the parking lot too.
So there won't be any impact and noise, I mean, I guess with detailing, I'd imagine it's pretty quiet.
Yeah.
I mean, you can require that, you know.
I wouldn't think so, I don't know what.
Yeah, if they're washing outside, perhaps any power detailing equipment can be inside, you know, vacuums and now you've got the buffers and stuff. I, they're gonna wanna do that inside.
Yeah, they're gonna want, they're not gonna wanna be in the sun or, or rain or anything like that, doing that work, so.
And could you walk us through kind of, cause like you did have the, there about storage, like miscellaneous stores?
Yeah, so I'll give you a good example right now. Um, so my primary job, my regular day job is, uh, with company called Hamilton. And so we're, uh, right on Forge Park and we had a system that we had to ship from Switzerland, um, at the end of our fiscal year in June. So that's actually in storage, sitting in the building now, uh, waiting to be delivered to the end customer. We just didn't have a place to keep it. Our buildings are full, so I said, well, keep it here, I really don't want it there, cause it's a little bit of a conflict of interest. Uh, but we're like, I can put it there for free. It gives you guys a place to keep it.
I think that's kind of, he's just CY himself, cause, you know, he's got a little bit of storage here and there. They're not gonna be running a storage business.
No, no, I want to store cars.
He should CY himself. Okay, that was what it is, it was all storage, yeah.
A, a good example is, um, like I, I have, I actually don't have any customers storing non-vehicles there right now, other than this inventory I have for work. Um, but if a customer wanted to store a pallet of tires, like I have my own race car tires and street tires on pallets, up on pallet racks. Um, that'd be the kind of miscellaneous storage that I would expect, uh, with this kind of business.
Okay.
I mean, I also have oddball things in there like, uh, there's a guy that runs a tree company and he has this crazy snow blower, like Italian bought it in Canada, snow blower, quarter of a million dollar machine. And he stores that in there during summer. It's just oddball type storage, but it's vehicle.
Man, Mr. Chargers for.
Yeah.
So I actually, I took a ride down there today, um, cause I hadn't actually seen the site in person, which I will say, I know, I do recall seeing the building before improvements were done and no doubt, very, very nicely done with the paving. The building looks excellent from the outside. I did, the main reason going there, I wanted to see if there was the storm drain, cause it was on.
Yep.
That initial sketch and there is a storm drain there. I'm not sure where it goes.
It's just drywall.
Okay, so it's just a dry.
And it's actually too small. I'm working with asphalt engineering right now to remedy that, but.
Okay.
They, um, fair enough, they didn't believe me when I said it was just.
I, fair enough. I did notice when I was there, so there is some outdoor storage on the left-hand side, I think there's trailers.
Yeah, those are mine.
Yep, and then I think there's also, it looked like there might have been some pallets or something. Like on the other side of the, the.
There's a glass, there's a, there's a glass rack.
Is that it?
Yeah, yeah, it's a glass company.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're renting, they're renting space for me to store shower glass.
Okay, fair enough.
Does that not fall into the outdoor stores, though? Thought we were very specific about.
Well, this, it's this. So the way that this is written, I will say that the decision is a little confusing. So number one says the requested activity shall be conducted substantially in accordance with the application submitted and materials contained in the file. I'll get to that in one second. And then two, review emergency response access in and around the building with the fire department. A fire access plan shall be reviewed and improved by the fire chief or is designated priority issuance of an occupancy permit which that is gonna go hand in hand with outdoor storage areas. Um, three is where the typo is, access the facility shall be available to customers between nine AM to one PM, seven days a week. No access to the public shall be allowed onsite outside the hours listed above. All access by, shall be by appointment only. All parking event, vehicle should be on site, no parking allowed on the private way.
Yep.
Um, and then there, these are all just the cookie cutter, the five, six and seven, it's just the appeals, uh, process. Making sure the zoning bylaws and building code are abided by that sort of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now if I go, I think there was a revised narrative.
I think Brian, Brian Salver, he picked that up, the, in that discussion, um, we definitely talked about outdoor storage.
Correct, and I, I.
Trailers, car haulers, for small delivery, by popular approval, the point.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think we also talked about no storage outside sets trailers.
It has it in the, uh, the minutes.
I thought so.
Cause it says here, it says that, um, car hauler trailers will be allowed in the outdoor, outdoor parking area, which can fit approximately six to eight. All vehicles must be registered and insured. There will be no vehicles or any type of paraphernalia stored outside. So I'd assumed to, to mean anything of storing of car parts or.
Well, that was, that was the gist of the conversation. It was that we didn't want, you know, I'll summarize, but we didn't want engine blocks and buckets of oil and just junk, right? We didn't want half-finished project cars with no wheels up on cinder blocks. I mean, it really was, um, an image thing, right? We didn't want this to become a nothing glass. Uh, that was definitely a lot of the topic of conversation.
But I would think that the glass storage kind of falls under that, cause I would worry that.
Well, yeah, I, I didn't know you done everything that's, it seems good and. Right, and I went by the, the decision itself and I didn't see the no outside storage in the decision.
Would you be willing to move that indoors?
I can't, I can't. Um, I can just kick them out.
Oh, okay.
Well, but I guess my, my concern lies on our part too, I'd be very much.
Yeah.
Cause it's in that discussion, but not in the decision, unless we have a revised decision somewhere that actually falls on us.
That is not covered in the decision.
Yeah.
I don't, do not read it in the decision one bit. Right, not, not picking on you, they, they have it all.
Yeah.
So this is, um, we have a revised decision?
I've, this is the first that I hear that there may even be one, so.
Okay.
You know, let me, let me dig that up.
Okay, we can take that up at a later time, but.
I think that would be very beneficial, cause there may have been some items that were added. Uh, you know, this unfortunately, I think was in the midst of when we didn't really have a town planner and things were a little awry.
I, I know the only thing that Amy and I discussed changing was the, the hours. Yeah, cause I knew at that time and I can go, the, the hours didn't match what we decided and i- in the, in the written decision.
I mean, I would think, yeah, nine to one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a very.
So that's the only thing that, that her and I talked about revising, we didn't revise anything else.
It was just. Yeah. I guess aside from that, does any, any of the board members have any other thoughts?
I actually have a question here. Um, in the decision, it actually mentions all access, uh, by the public should be appointment only.
Correct.
Is that something you wanna change or is that still, okay, so that's still only?
Absolutely.
And that'll be true for the detailing as well?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, this is not, so in, in no way are we running any kind of a retail operation. So even with the car detailing, it's part-time for him. So he is a, he's a welder and so he has a regular full-time job that he has to go to all the time. And this is done, you know, after work and on the weekends for him. So it's not high volume and it's purely by appointment, so. And people aren't gonna just be showing up and, actually, I don't think there's any detailer, you can just show up and drop off a car. But, uh, yeah, that's, that's absolutely gonna stay true. Because I can still, my insurance only allows like me in the building. He's gonna be in the building because he has his own commercial insurance. So he's gonna give me a CLI to cover him being in the building. Uh, so yeah, nobody's allowed to be in the building without me.
And while the detail is happening, where do the customers wait?
They don't, they leave.
They leave.
Yeah, detailing is multiple hours.
There's a drop off.
It's a drop off.
Pickup.
Yeah.
Here's what the public has to ask for you.
Yeah, um, and I just motion to open it up to the public.
Make that motion.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so if you would like to just, uh, make any comments, uh, just stand up, give us your name and address and, uh, just, um, direct it to the board.
Well. Don Lo, eighty Pine Grove Avenue. Um, one of my main concerns and, and questions I have for you, especially running a detailed situation. Um, it's primarily going to be done on the weekends. Um, vacuum cleaners and air hoses going off during the weekend when primarily we are there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is something that's concerning us.
Okay.
So I'm wondering what you would think about noise pollution, for example?
Well.
Cover the board with it.
Yeah. Car driving by, for example, is one thing, something that's gonna be stored, brought out, in and out. Um, I worry about, uh, multiple cars that are coming in on the weekends, for example, and, uh, just the continuous noise. Uh, vacuums are very loud. Uh, detailing includes a lot of, uh, air pressure being released. Um, being contained in the building is one thing. Um, those hot days, the door goes up, things are getting done outside. Uh, these are concerns that I have.
Yeah, okay, how has your experience been, um, with the, the current business?
Fine, fine, John has done a great job cleaning up the, uh, the area. Um, and it's been very non-disruptive, uh, to the neighborhood. So I will give you that. Um, he's been a great neighbor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, um, with that, the building's gonna be, is it gonna be cooled?
Yes.
So could we just condition just to have that, or would you be willing to have the detailing business always have the doors closed?
Sure.
And operate?
I mean, they'll wash outside during the nice weather.
Yeah.
And then, cause if they're washing inside, they're gonna have to pay to empty the tank. Uh, they're not gonna wanna do that.
I did, yeah, I can see that, the vacuum, everything being.
Yeah, the vacuum stuff, e- even so, either in cool weather or warm weather, the building's gonna be air-conditioned. So they're gonna wanna be inside doing that. So it should be, I, I don't see it being a, a real noise pollution. I'll say any more than I've been already.
Okay.
I would say we definitely.
I mean, I'm not. I would just. But the washing outside, I think makes.
Indoor with white trucks.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Um, anyone else out in the public, um, like to just give your name and address if you have any other comments or thoughts?
Yeah. Good. Yeah, Charles Johnson, one twenty Pine Grove Avenue. Uh, I'm not directly in vision of the, of the building, but I do have some concerns based on our previous meetings that he had. Uh, one of them was, where is all this wastewater going? Uh, generally, um, uh, washing, uh, car washing facilities have a recovery, recirculate. Uh, sounds like water is gonna go on the car and going in the floor drains or the catch basin outside. Where's it go after that? There's a brook behind that building, probably twenty, thirty feet or something. Uh, so water that goes in the ground is eventually gonna make it to that brook. So that was one concern. Uh, when we first had the meetings last, uh, two years ago, uh, I thought it was gonna be just a, his business. And by walking down there, there's a last sign on the end of the building. Uh, and I didn't believe that, you know, I, I came today to ask about, was there an exception made so we could have another business in the building? And I didn't really get an answer for that. Uh, so now there'd be possibly a business on the left-hand end and the business on the right-hand end and him in the middle. Uh, so that gives me a little concern and I have pictures of stuff stored outside. Not to, to cause them problems, but when he said there's nothing stored outside, there appears to be stuff stored outside. Uh, if the board would like to see this picture, I do have.
Yeah.
A picture of, uh, glass, I guess, in a rack and looks like a pallet, looks like a, uh, could be a furnace or something.
Do you mind, Brian?
Yeah, you can.
When were these, uh, pictures taken?
Today.
Okay.
I know, I know it's today.
And the glass company move in today?
No.
I'm just kidding.
You know, so. No, so that, that trailer, um, it's actually, it's not really being stored there, it's being dropped there for a couple of days. Uh, we took out our heating system and I sold it. And the guy that bought it, put it on the trailer and said, can I leave this trailer here for a couple of days? I said, yep.
I think you should.
Yep, and he's gonna come back and take it. So that's not stating, uh, the other three trailers belong to me. Okay, so those are mine. Um, and the glass rack is, as discussed, uh, it is there, it's outdoor storage. Um, they are not running a business out of there, they do a glass drop. So they're renting space for me to keep a glass drop. If I can't have it, I'll kick them out, it's plain and simple. Um, but I thought I was within the purview of the permit, especially where the fire department has said, we're good. He was just there, so he saw all this. He didn't see the trailer with the furnaces on it, but, cause that just happened yesterday or to, yesterday. Um, so, but yeah, I can't have that company storing glass outside, that's okay.
I mean, it seems to me like you're doing a great job that you cleaned up the property and that you're being a good neighbor. My, yeah, my concern, my concern would be, yeah, that it's kind of, uh, even with good intentions that it could build on, that you get more and more, and to, to the neighbor's point about having multiple, if there's multiple business or storage.
Well, so there, the primary business is mine, I mean, the primary business is me storing vehicles, right? That, that's what the primary business is. Um, there is again, an approval for non-hazardous storage, non-hazardous warehousing. So that's really what I looked at that glass rack as, it's like, this is very passive. They're there like once every, the meet or two, dropping off a shower door for the local installer to come and grab it and pick it up. Um, yeah.
So, Rob, I have a question, so based on the way the decision is written, there's no restrictions on him leasing out space in his building for a use?
Well, no, that'd be an extension of the study.
It'd have to be an extension, because we, we did this for automobile storage.
Sure, yeah.
Not for glass storage or rental space where the people store it. Not for glass storage or rental space where the people store it. This was strictly for his business to store automobiles, watercraft, motorcycles.
Okay.
And general warehousing, which is why the glass is there.
I know that is a good point, though.
Yeah, I think. I think i- if a company is, is utilizing his business to store materials, as long as they're non-hazardous, in my opinion, it. Meets this criteria, I can understand the question of the outdoor storage, because it does. Looking at this, it seems like the minutes are contradicting the decision a little bit.
I don't see anything in the decision for general warehousing, storage. Please correct me, but.
Nor.
If my old eyes am not seeing it.
You're not incorrect, I think. For whatever reason, this decision referenced the materials that were submitted and that initial. Um, decision reference.
Well, it's also, I think it's what I submitted to, it's this summary of use.
Yeah, and it's, so you ended up adding to it, I'm just referencing the previous twenty twenty-three.
Yep, so I added the one paragraph at the end. Um. I can pull it up, but the original part is still.
I guess in the meantime, is there anyone else in the public that wants to, uh, speak? I'll let him go and then.
All right, names, oh, I'm sorry, do you have one?
Yeah, it's up to you.
Nope, go ahead and finish.
Okay.
Uh. I don't think we answered, my question is, where does the wastewater go?
Oh, good.
Actually, I, I didn't leave, it's written in my notes.
Yep.
You did not leave me.
So wastewater goes into a dry well. That leaches into the ground, just like all the rainwater and runoff and everything else.
Does conservation need to poke in on that if she's gonna be running business washing house there?
I mean, there probably shouldn't be something for oil and.
Well, their, their criteria would mostly be for if there's any disturbances within a hundred foot, not so much the use. Um.
Or if stuff going down into a drain regulates that.
Uh, that would, that be building?
That's just stormwater.
Stormwater, except a chemical for wash.
Well. You can call it anything you want, I don't know what's going in there.
Don't say it, car wash bait.
He's washing cars, there'll be chemicals you think.
Yeah, which will go into that drain.
Yep, and everybody washes cars on their driveways and everything, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't know. If it's hazardous or not, I don't know what they're washing it with, but oils are regulated, you know, for, um. Inside buildings and stuff like that, you, you know, it's, it puts it into a certain category, cow washes are not in the category.
If when I gather, the inside storage goes into a tank?
So a building, um, that is depending on the use, um. And the amount of overhead doors, it's required to have floor drains if there's vehicles stored in the building, and, you know.
Which is connected to a tight tank.
Yes, it's, it's the plumbing code.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And that exists. So that helps catch like all the oils or anything?
If something was to rupture inside the building, they don't wanna get him out of the building. So there's a floor drain, it's either, the floor is e- either required to pitch to the middle to a drain or before it gets outside in front of the door, you know.
So there's nothing, um, requiring that right outside, you would need a kind of drain if it was for vehicle storage or anything like that?
So any vehicle that's stored in a building, a drain has to be installed, it's either at the overhead door. A gutter, you know, that goes into a system that gets collected and, you know. It has an alarm on and everything, when it gets so high, the tank gets so high, the alarm lets them know and he has to, a company comes and pumps it out. So nothing goes into the, uh, the ground as far as that kind of a drain. Parking lot drains, uh, you know, I mean, that's just like our drain, uh, our runoff water in the streets, I mean. Battery acid comes off cars, there's all kinds of. So, so stuff that comes off cars that goes into our drainage, so.
Basically, nothing we're gonna, nothing on regulator.
It's not, look, if it's built brand new, if it was built brand new, there, there would be. Different kinds of hoods and, and that kind of separators, but this isn't, you know, the. It's just not.
That's, that's why we asked you, if you don't know.
Yep. It's not a requirement for this use. But, you know, if he was building it new and it was a car wash and, you know, the detailing business, yeah, there'd be all kinds of stuff, you know, probably. You know, but that's with stormwater, as Rob, as you know, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
When you go through this with every new, uh, business, this, it just doesn't fit in that category, you know.
While you're here. Your house.
Um. Anyone else in the public?
Ralph Kendricks, uh, one thirty-one, you're on. Um, I, I know I have concerns, I, and I hate to be the guy, like, you know, it sounds like he's trying to do good for the neighborhood and he's. Trying to help out a young guy who's trying to start a business, but I really feel like there's a lot of mission creep in this, right? When he first came in to apply for the permit, and I think everybody in the neighborhood was a little bit upset about it. It was this open-ended thing, because he might want office space for his son's plumbing business, and he might want this, he went, he had this general catch-all. In the town, I think rightfully so, realized this is sort of a special property, right, it's commercial, but it's, it's completely surrounded by homes. So the decision was made to make it so that there was no outside storage, no automotive repair, no automotive maintenance, none of that was allowed. And he was allowed to do storage of his own personal items, and he did mention storing items for his business and then for the auto storage. Now it's expanded to have the glass people storing there, and I realize he's willing to kick them out, that's, that's. I feel bad for the glass people, but that's all well and good, but nobody in the neighborhood wanted any type of auto repair. Right, and it feels to me like this is just that next step and get into a place that we don't wanna get to for that particular piece of property. Right, if he's doing, I mean, you can say all you want. You know, everybody washes their cars, that's fine, but I don't think anybody here is washing cars seven days a week in their driveways, right? So there is a lot of, and again, I'm not an EPA expert, right, there is a little river behind there, right? And water that goes into that ground has to seep into there, I don't know if that's EPA thing or not, right? But I feel like, I feel like initially the plan was to try and make this sort of a multi-use, multifaceted building. And the town said, no, we're totally opposed to that, let's really restrict what you're trying to do. And now there's been some expansion by having glass people there, I didn't know there was a sign for a company, I mean, if they have a sign on the building, that's a little bit more than doing glass storage. Right, it's, they're renting space from him, it's, it's a glass company, and I don't know whether or not his son has plumbing supplies in there, I know that was part of the initial thing. But now we're getting into this next piece, and it just feels like there's a lot of mission creep, this is expanding out into what the neighborhood didn't want. So that, those would be my concerns.
What, um, can I, may I ask what your experience has been to date with the current business?
Listen, they're fine, right, I, I don't, I don't have any issue, you know, I, I initially looked at buying that building a long time ago to do car storage in it. Right, I was gonna do car and motorcycle storage in it, and I measured out the square footage and I said, I can't make a business work in here. There wasn't enough money to be made from the amount of cars. So I initially had some conversations around would I expand it, maybe I do some auto repair or something like that. But I realized, as special as that property is and under special permits, that those types of things weren't gonna be allowed, so I passed on buying the building, right? And this isn't sour grapes, I passed on the building, I didn't, I didn't wanna do it, because I didn't think the square footage worked. Right, if he can justify it because he's storing items from his own business in there, he's got the cars and he's just storing his own cars, that's fantastic. But nobody wants any type of auto repair or auto maintenance, or, I mean, I think one of the other big things was. You know, that they would start doing auto sales, right, and the next thing you know, there'd be six cars parked outside. For customers to come and look at, additional traffic for that, and it feels like that's where we're going, right, there was an initial request. And it was modified, restricted, and now they've actually gone outside the scope of what they were allowed to do, uh, you know, from the meeting minutes and say, there, I don't know what's in the actual sign-off. But they've gone outside of that, and now the request is to go outside of it a little bit more. And as you get those concentric circles getting larger and larger, it's not what was proposed for the area and it's not what was initially appro- approved. As a neighbor, I mean, the building definitely looks a lot better, I, I, I have no fault with him, I have no issue with what they're doing. But I do have issues with expanding that out, particularly, once you get into automotive detailing, right? Then it's, oh, this guy wants to put halogen lights in his tire, oh, I can do that while I'm detailing the car, and, you know, it's not really a business, but people were sort of doing it. I, I feel like that's where we're headed. Right, so, and that would be my opposition to it, I don't know how the other folks feel about that, but I know that was definitely, we, we didn't want it to be like an auto thing.
Yes, no, yeah.
And this is, this is that first step towards, towards doing that, you know, their inside stuff is great, I mean, they're, they're quiet, that's, that's all fine, but. Bringing in that additional automotive piece to me is a concern.
Yes, no, and I agree that we would wanna keep it, that we don't wanna, um. Cause any increase that would, um, uh. Make any impact to what the current uses, as far as noise or especially just any. Just so that it doesn't have any more effect on the neighborhood.
So, so it's, it can do that, right, exactly what you're saying, having the hours be seven to nine or eight to nine, whatever they're proposed, right? And then having a guy whose plan is to work after business hours, right? He's definitely gonna put an additional burden on that road in that neighborhood that isn't. Residential use, right, it's not what the people used to, and then expanding it to seven days a week. Is gonna have people working in there on Saturdays and Sundays and cars being picked up and dropped off, which again, I think is. It's sort of not in the spirit of what was intended to allow him to do in that building, right? I don't know how much of a problem it's gonna cause, right, but it's definitely not what was, was proposed, and it's definitely not what was approved.
Well, I mean, we can condition too that, um, the detailing business has separate hours, if that's part of the concern.
But, but the. All after hours.
Yeah, it's, I, I think the, yeah, but I, I mean, is the extended hours more just for. It's for my flexibility to drop off and pick up, it's both.
Oh, what do you want? Car detailer is a welder professionally.
Yeah.
Who does car detailing nights and weekends.
On the side, yeah, okay.
So it, it, all of his business is going to be during the off-business hours when people are home and, in their neighborhood and, and on Saturdays and Sundays. Right, and again, I, I feel bad, I don't wanna kick a guy who's trying to start, a kid who's trying to start a small business, right, and he's trying to help the guy out. But I don't think this is where we end up stopping.
You know, I just, I, I do wanna add one other kind of little thing here, so, you know, I've got this building and the parking lot and all that kind of stuff, but. The, I am a service to the neighborhood, because the mailman uses my parking lot. FedEx guy uses my parking lot, the Amazon guy uses my parking lot, the trash company uses my parking lot. Every single one of those services uses my parking lot to park for a little while, have a snack. E. Um, and, and I'm okay with that, because I wanna be a good neighbor, right, I let my direct neighbor who's not here tonight, you know, he. When he has a party, he parks, I let his family park there, so I'm really trying to be a good neighbor and I, I, I don't. I, I, I don't wanna have a business that's the, that's, uh, uh, obtrusive to the neighborhood, right? It, it doesn't do me any benefit, um, so having, uh, the, the, the young man's name's Charlie. Having him do detailing, I am perked, he'll do all his detailing aside, if he washes a vehicle, yeah, he's gonna wash it outside. Um, I would think at most, he's probably gonna do ten or twelve cars a week. Like he's not doing hundreds of vehicles either at the time, and when he gets to that point, if he ever wants to go do this as a full-time job, he's not gonna do it there. Like, that's it, like, it's, it's a done deal, like, I, I can't have you running a full-time business, because it's mine, right, this is my business. I'm, I want him as a service to my customers, that's the only benefit that he's giving me. Right, he's giving me a couple hundred bucks a month to rent a little space in the, in the building for his tools and to have one car. Being detailed inside, uh, and any cars, if he has cars waiting, I told him, I said, you can stick them inside and wait. Um, while, you know, before they come pick them up, so, I mean, I'm, I'm really. Trying to do a very good thing to be in that, you know, being a good neighbor, um.
It does seem like you've been a good neighbor, so I mean, I think that, um, I don't want people angry with me, right, that does me no good. Anyway, I've invested a bit, quite a bit to the property and made it a lot nicer, so.
And, and I mean, someday, just to address the concern about my sons, I got one son that's a plumber, I've got one son that's an H, HVAC tech. If the day comes that they would like to operate a business out of there, they'll come sit before this board and we'll change the use again, right? Most likely, I won't be storing cars there anymore, it will be their thing now, and if they've got a couple of vans, then they park the vans inside. And we're still only, I'll say, storing cars, right, but that's a different use, that's not today. That could be five years from now, we'll come back and chat again, but that's not today.
Okay. Um, is there anyone else in the public?
I have just one quick question, um, so Gene Bradley ninety pine grove out, um, I'm curious, as Charlie's business grows. Um, will he have other people working with him and will there be more than one car being worked on at a time and would that increase? The noise that we're talking about, even if it's indoors?
This is the one that's doing detailing?
Yes, okay, I, I know he does have friends that help him out, um, doing the stuff, but again, if, if the stipulation is that the detailing part of it, the vacuuming. Any compressed areas has to be done inside, so be it.
I think that's what we would be looking at as a board, is to highly condition.
Yeah.
The use of the detailing so that it, um. Maybe dedicated space that's inside, number of employees, number of vehicles for that business.
I've got that, I've got the space.
Closed doors, all equipment indoors.
Just wanna make sure again, that doesn't creep.
Yes, cuz I agree with you, yeah.
It's fair?
Yeah.
Go.
Yeah, I, I just want, as he said, he's gonna do ten cars a week, seven, ten. Uh, plus people coming there to pick up the, the person while the car's being detailed. That probably triples the traffic on that street. Because he has a low volume traffic now, but that would probably triple the traffic. On that street, you know, even though it's only ten or fifteen cars, that's five times what the street gets now. So I just wanna add that in, if people thinking about, you know, ten cars turns into fifteen. And that's trips all both ways, so it, it ups the traffic on that little side street.
Okay, and for the detailing, I guess, um, it sounds like, I guess. It's kind of opportunity, that you kind of know someone looking to do the business and also you're saying that it works with your business, with storage, it's an added amenity for. Customers.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's it, I, I mean, I'll be honest, it makes no difference to me whether or not it's approved, I would like to help them out. I would like to have this service offered, I mean, probably if it, I mean, is there. If I wanted to have my customers detailed in the building. And it's not a business operating out of there, would I even need to be sitting here?
Well, I think, um, yeah, because before, though, I think the concern was when you. And previously was about the storage of the cars and not having people tinkering on their cars and.
Yeah, nobody tinkers on the cars.
So that was part of that concern before, which I get, so the detailing, I can see the concern about being working.
It's not a.
After hours and.
Yeah, my insurance doesn't cover mechanic work.
Okay.
But it was specifically stated when we talked about this initially, would clients be allowed to work on their own vehicles in there? And the answer was no, and the town's setup was, they wouldn't want that, so that.
Correct.
I think what he's saying is, if I wasn't doing a business and I just wanna let my customers could detail in there, I think that would be allowed, and the answer is. No, it wouldn't be allowed, it, it was specifically addressed, the clients wouldn't be able to work on their own cars.
No, 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 not, sorry, not working on a car, um, if I wanted to have a mobile detailer come. And detail a customer's car inside my facility, I don't see how that's not freedom.
We'll, we'll walk. This chair, I'm, I'm just gonna put my two cents, it's, I'm always straightforward, uh, I applaud the outcome of. Uh, coming and asking permission and offer forgiveness, uh, that's always important to me. But I'm also not very happy about the outdoor storage of signs of glass and a sign out there for glass business. That was not the spirit of the special permit.
Yeah, I would agree.
It kind of sticks to my side a little bit, because. The spirit of the special permit was for storage of vehicles indoors. With the use of outside for a couple of car haul drills and stuff, not to rent space to a glass company. So, I'm pleased he's here, but I also got a thorn.
I know, I guess my concern is even with the best intentions, that you're the glass storage, but then if you're looking to make profit. You got someone else that's looking at the store a little bit, and before you know it.
So I've turned away significant business. Because of, I wanna be a good neighbor. I've turned away RVs, I've turned away more trailers, I had a guy that wanted to store fourteen enclosed trailers in that parking lot. Technically, they would fit and not impede that fire lane, but it was not the right thing to do. For that environment, and we turned it away, so I've turned away significant business to be. Doing the right thing, right, the glass thing, from my perspective, they're not running a business out of there, it's literally a glass drop. And the only reason there's a sign is so that the guy knows where to drop the glass, that's it.
Uh, but in, in all, in all fairness to everything we went through back two years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the spirit of the special permit was for the vehicles.
Agreed, and, and general warehousing, I don't know how that got lost.
There's no wording of general warehousing yet, and I know personally, I would have shut that down, it was, the spirit of the permit was for the vehicles.
Agreed, that's, that was definitely my primary use.
Okay, is there, uh, anyone else in the public?
I just, I have one more question, um. The, uh, I, I feel like the drain water thing keeps getting glossed over, that whole area floods out on a regular basis.
I know, that's why my question was.
Is, is the water from this detail facility going down the tank drain? Or is that eventually just gonna go reach out into the river and contribute to the water we already have?
Yeah, I think it's. Yeah, I think it's, I, I guess it's, it is outside our purview, I guess for this, but, um, it sounds like, uh, the building inspector Tim is saying that. They're required to have a drain to deal with any, uh, contaminants in the building. Which he's doing, and then anything outside the building, he's following all the regulations.
Standard drain then.
That is just going down a stormwater drain out in the parking.
Which contributes to the overall areas water.
Yes, that's true, I'd say on my crow scale. Yes, I've been there when it's flooded out.
But I mean, you could say the same thing for large parking lots, that, so I think that's, yeah, but that's true. Um, anyone else in the public have anything else to add? Should we, uh? Close it?
Uh, Rob Studdler over there.
So, um. So I get, first of all, I didn't realize that there may be another decision out there. So, what I was going to recommend, I don't know if the board is in favor or not in favor of granting the special permit. What might be helpful, John, if you're in agreement to, to continue this to the next meeting in October. What I initially was trying to do was get a draft. Draft decision together with conditions that would include detailing indoors. Um, out specifying hours outside of the hours of the storage. But I wouldn't really wanna broach that subject without having the correct decision as the base for a new decision. Um, and it also sounds like there might be a little bit of contradiction. Between what was discussed at the meeting. Made it into this decision, so it might be helpful if we continue to October, maybe you and I can discuss.
Sure.
Some of these operations, some of the issues that have been brought up, to see if there might be a way to address those. In an updated decision, just so everybody's in line with first the storage and then potentially. If, you know, the board is okay with it based on conditions, the additional, uh, detailing. Uh, that would be my recommendation, I don't know how the board feels, I mean, if the board.
Yeah, I would very much like to see if there was a updated decision made. Sure, I'm kinda surprised if it was made that I didn't sign it.
Yeah, I don't, I do not know, like I said, this is the first time there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would also like to see if Amy could get through her emails, do?
It's just, it's just ours.
Yeah, I'd just see if there's any, anything else in her emails that maybe got missed, um. Yeah, just a little bit more digging, because there does seem to be confusion.
Yeah.
Around, um, the filings.
And I apologize, cause I feel like if I was here in twenty twenty-three, we wouldn't be having all this confusion. I get, that is why we have public hearings for this, sort of stuff, so, um.
My, my ZBA emails will go back, my back.
I probably have, I probably have them.
Yeah.
They're somewhere.
But, yeah, I agree as well.
And, okay. Meeting was recorded, we've always.
Is it still?
It was post-meeting, so I had, the decision was made.
Yeah.
I picked it up and I looked at, I said, oh, Amy, the, the time's wrong.
Yeah.
Right, cause it, and it's like, we had definitely different hours, that was the only thing that was changed, there was nothing else in the decision that was.
There's clear conversation in the meeting minutes about storage.
Yeah, so maybe, I mean, if we all wanna take a, a beat.
Is it still available?
I don't know, how, how long the, the videos get stored?
Oh, they're back from twenty nineteen, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look and see.
So, on, on Rob's recommendation, I would like to make a motion if you continue it to the October second meeting. Can we get further information?
Second. All is in favor?
Okay, okay, we'll be in touch. And then I wanna thank the neighbors and.
Yes, thank you very much.
I am David, I ran through this one, what, Michelle, we bought, um, seven hundred glass key.
I'm familiar with the property.
This one did vacant on the derelict one with three. Yeah, exactly.
Did you buy it, buy it?
Like I said, the only thing I remember was ours.
Really too much space for us, so. Bring in another fellow contractor or.
That's stuff we can't discuss right now. We're in a public meeting right now.
Okay.
We're in a public meeting.
Awesome.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, I can be ready, have a good night.
I'm at the meeting, as I did see, I've been before.
I don't think I can vote.
Well, you don't need a super majority for the meeting.
Well, was it there?
Uh, I have. So, that was it? Excellent.
How's it looking for next year?